I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, it's picture time. So I think we'll stand over here. Sorry, everybody.
I'm sorry, what are we doing?
Taking pictures of your book.
Oh.
Very inclusive, your book.
I think they wanted to take a picture of us.
Do the ranches, I, there. It's last against the wall.
Oh, no. I'm no longer here. Oh, no. It doesn't work.
Funny, by the way. It's a little funny.
Good? Yeah, okay. So when the next meeting, March 8th, we can let you know. Thanks for your patience.
Do you want, yes, standing?
All three of us here?
Same spot? Where you want?
One year old.
Wow. Very sweet. So what year now? What?
Can you change that background to green in Photoshop?
All right, are you going to ask the spelling bee to spell something?
That's a good idea.
And the G O B.
Well, you can do, you can do the G O B.
You know, I have my favorite question with the G O B. But he'll know it.
Should we move over?
I think of a really difficult one.
Okay.
And what are you going to do?
I was just looking up the G O B. That was the word from the spelling bee. Yeah. Okay, so we will begin with our acceptance of our agenda. Can I have a motion, please? Oh, I'm going to just make the amendment, the adjustment amendment to the, to the agenda to include a discussion, I guess it would be five point two for the bond fund, the, pardon me, the fund balance detail. So just, we want to make sure our agenda has that amendment. Because that's really in addition to five point one. We want to have that first for a second. Okay, good. Can I have a motion then to accept that amended agenda as just, as so described?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And finally, we get to recognize all of you after that bit of holo-balloo. So we begin with our recognition of our spelling bee winners from the Main Street School. And I think that means Joyce is going to take over the mic.
Good evening, everybody. I am proud to share with you information about the Main Street School Spelling Bee. So this year, we had our Spelling Bee on Wednesday, January 19th. Leading up to the Spelling Bee, 99 4th graders took our pre-Bee Written Bee and 105 5th graders took our Written Pre-Bee. And from those students, 20 students surfaced as the finalists in each grade level and then competed in a 4th grade Spelling Bee and a 5th grade Spelling Bee. And from those 20, tonight, we have our runner-up for 4th grade Molly Martin. Molly, you want to stand up so everyone can see you? And we have our two winners for 4th grade, Catherine Fisher and Tierney Kane. And for 5th grade, we have our runner-up Andrew Guerrero. And we have our winner for 5th grade, Graham Adams. So I don't know how many of you have ever had to stand up in front of a crowd of, you know, 150-plus people, your peers, adults, teachers, looking at you, spotlights on you, they get up there, the word is given to them, and they spell it. They are so eloquent, they stand, it's amazing. I am in awe of each and every one of you for your persistence and your willingness to take a risk in the job that you did and how you represented Main Street School in such a beautiful way. So thank you so much. So I, one more thank you. I just want to thank the P T S A because without their support, we wouldn't be able to bring the Spelling Bee to our community. So thank you, P T S A.
Ms. Chatnick could be called each student up individually so they can receive a certificate from Mr. Whitney and be congratulated by the.
Yes, so why don't we start with Molly? Molly Martin, why don't you come up?
Congratulations, Molly. There you are.
And Catherine Fisher. And Tierney Kane.
He sold the shirt off.
Let's see the shirt, I want to see the shirt. Very nice.
Wow, great.
And Andrew Guerrero.
Congratulations. There you are.
And Graham Adams.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Chatnick, and congratulations, everyone. Very, very proud and impressed by your accomplishment. And now, we'd like to invite Mr. Sotile to come up so we can recognize the G O B winners from the middle school.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison, and thanks to the board. Thanks to everyone for being here tonight. The G O B is a very exciting event at the middle school. Students do begin to compete in the G O B at Main Street School, and then it, it just kind of grows and the enthusiasm kind of builds as they come to the middle school. And so tonight, we're here to honor our runner-up and champion for 2016. This was our seventh annual Geography Bee. And every student in the middle school starts by taking the preliminary test, which happens in, usually in late November. And from that, that, that group, which is over 400 students strong, 10 students make the final round and they compete in front of the entire middle school. And I have to say, it's both nerve-wracking for the students and for me because I have to read the questions. And, you know, for those of you who have done any work on geography, you know how difficult some of those words are to pronounce. But it's amazing. It's an amazing event for our school community. The level of enthusiasm that our participants bring is matched only by the enthusiasm that their fellow students bring to the event as they celebrate their peers, cheer them on, show a great deal of appreciation and respect for them. And it really is a great, great school community event every year, and we're thrilled to have it. It's also very personal to me. As a former social studies teacher, you cannot learn history, you cannot appreciate the growth of civilizations without an appreciation and an understanding of geography. So it really, it has so many applications. And, and to see the group that is competing on the stage with, with their passion for it really brings a lot of joy to so many of us. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce this year's runner-up, 7th grader Killian Daly. And our repeating champion and three-time finalist, Zach Rosman, 8th grader. I just want to add one thing about Zach. We just got the word today that Zach will be moving on. He, the winner of the Geography Bee takes a written test. Every school's winner takes a written test. And from those groups, 100 winners are chosen or are qualified to compete at the state level. So Zach qualified to compete at the state level, which will be on April 1st. And he'll, and there he'll be competing for the opportunity to go to the National Geography Bee, which takes place in Washington, D.C. So we're all rooting for Zach, and we're so proud of him.
So Killian, why don't you come on up and be acknowledged? Let me start over here.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Zach, come on down.
Congratulations.
And good luck in the, in the states.
At Albany.
Good luck, we'll be calling for you. Great, thank you, Mr. Sotile. And again, congratulations to our middle school students and best of luck to Zach. So floor is back to you.
Did you want to stump the G O B winners with a tough one?
All right, G O B winner, I have a question for you.
Uh-oh, Zach. Zach and Killian.
Zach was at the states last year, just, this is, this is, this is, this is, Zach, you gotta go to the.
Zach. This is my favorite one. What's the capital of Burkina Faso?
Wagadougas.
Yes!
Sounds like, it sounds like Killian knew the answer.
Killian, you knew the same one. Okay, okay, I gotta, I have another one for you. What's the longest river in North America? No, guess what? It's the Missouri. But that's a good one.
Wow.
I agree, I agree, but it's not.
Outstanding.
I'm going with Killian on that one.
Well played, Killian.
Yeah, that's it.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you.
Good for him. All right.
All right, so we move speedily on to our district update, our report from our superintendent.
Yes, so certainly to continue on the theme of acknowledging our students, I want to recognize the work of our Model U N team, which recently competed in a conference up in Boston. And they really did a fabulous job. The entire delegation of 30 students won the highest award of Best Large Delegation. We had many individual students that were recognized the best, as best delegates. We had students recognized for outstanding delegates, honorable mention, verbal commendation, and then, of course, the outstanding large delegation going to our high school team. So we're extremely, extremely proud and certainly look forward to trying to get some press for their wonderful achievements. So we want to acknowledge all the students on the team, but we also want to acknowledge Ms. Courtney Geelen, who's their advisor and provides great leadership for the group. Certainly proud of them as well. The fall sports season is cruising along. Our varsity wrestling team competed in the Division II sectional tournament last week, and we placed four wrestlers in the top six at the respective weight classes. The varsity ice hockey team was seeded number eight, number eight in the Division I sectional tournament and won their opening round sectional game over, over number nine, New Rochelle, four to one. So they continue to move along in the playoffs. The winter track team had some great performances in sectionals and the state qualifiers. We had some students that are moving on, that are going to compete in the states. Some individual accomplishments worth recognizing would be Zoe Maxwell won the Class B sectional championship in the 300 meter and the triple jump. Other medalists at the sectional meet included Scotty Mitchell, second in the 1600 Griffin Knapp, second in the 55 High Hurdles. And the girls' 4x200 meter relay team placed second as well. At the state qualifier meet, Zoe took second place in the 300 and fifth in the triple jump. Her second-place finish in the 300 qualifies her for the state championships, which will be held at March 5th in Cornell. So congratulations to all of them. The boys' basketball team in the playoffs took on second place, Putt Valley. And they tried to play up, pull off an upset, played a tough game, but unfortunately, lost with only a couple minutes left, three minutes left in the game there, tied up 32-32. So they showed a lot of heart and did very well. So we're proud of their accomplishments. And the girls' basketball team is doing wonderfully. They're back in the county center for the 10th consecutive year. And they're scheduled, we're scheduled to play Valhalla today, but that game has been postponed because of weather concerns, and I believe it's going to be made up Friday, and that will be the county semifinals. So we look forward to hearing great things from them, and if victorious, they will play in the finals on, on next Monday night. I also want to take a second to acknowledge my dear colleague, Dr. Core. You know, we often step back and we celebrate the work of our teachers and, and our students primarily. And throughout the past few years, we've given a lot of attention to our work in and around understanding by design and instructional leadership, instructional design and all the work that's going on in curriculum revision. And Dr. Core has really been a leader in the field, and her work and the models of professional development and program implementation have been recognized by Rubicon Atlas. And they actually featured her, an interview of her in a blog, and then there's going to be an article published about her work and the leadership of the initiative here in Irvington in their upcoming newsletter. So kudos and thank you for all the. I also just want to make mention.
Does she get a certificate for that?
Yes, we can give her.
I think you have next to.
But we may have a trivia, a question for you that you have to. Just a little upstate, update on the homestead tax structure that we talked about at a prior meeting. Just today, we learned that the town board has opted not to pursue the homestead tax option. So there'll be one uniformed tax rate for the entire township. So there isn't going to be a differentiation between the residential and commercial, as previously had been discussed. So they are looking forward to finalizing details and that there should be some notices that will be heading out to taxpayers in the middle of March that will be explaining the adjustments that folks will see in their tax rates as a result of the reassessment. And I believe that's all I have for this evening.
All right. And do we have a report from Dr. Core?
No, we just got back yesterday, not that much.
Okay. Scratch that from the agenda. All right. Well, in that case, then we move on to our featured presentation, which is the beginning of our budget presentation. And that is hearing from Dr. Harrison and Ms. Miller and Mr. Knowles on the business, debt service, buildings and grounds, and transportation portions of our budget. And as I said earlier, we'll follow that with a discussion about the fund balance and how we have used the fund balance over the past five years, and that'll come after this.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Whitney, and good evening, everyone. As we always say, that this is a bit of a process here, and I always like to kick off the meetings by kind of updating where we are and where we are going. And we started off back on January 12th with a roundtable discussion with the administrative team and the board, where there was conversation about current initiatives in the schools and foreshadowing some needs for the future, which led into our last meeting, which seems like it was just yesterday, and really having a conversation about the state of the budget and the real challenges that we face. And as Mr. Whitney indicated, tonight, we're going to talk about the business operations side of things, and then on March 8th, we're going to get in, really into curriculum and technology and the like. And you can see the process moving along up to March 22nd, where I will present a proposed budget. So with that said, we head into all this with some objectives in mind. And we want to make sure that we're providing a fiscally sound budget, a budget that is going to deliver meaningful experiences for all of our students, and it's going to approach things from every angle of the school experience. So we're looking at the social-emotional piece, we're looking at co-curricular and extracurricular activities. But we're also looking at how we're supporting our teachers to be able to deliver that instruction and to make sure that we're providing a robust selection of opportunities for all of our students to be able to enjoy and succeed in their school environment. So as the presentation back on the ninth outlined, we have a lot of challenges. We have limitations of a tax levy cap, a tax levy cap that is actually $37,000 less than our current year, which is obviously highly problematic, has resulted us being in a position where currently, and as we said, this is a process, so these numbers change throughout the process, but currently, we're over $1 million over cap where we sit today. So there's a lot of difficult decisions that are going to have to be made. But in this process, the board and administration is charged with balancing our educational needs with having a responsible tax rate. But keeping in mind all the different obligations that we do have before us, those that are contractual and those that are requirements for the state of New York or the federal government. So tonight, we're going to talk about business operations, which includes transportation, things in the business office, debt service, buildings and grounds, and of course, our insurances. We're going to have some dialogue about what all this means to us, and it's important that, that we have feedback from you in the audience. So tonight, we're going to talk about this, it's going to be broken into individual categories. And we need to keep in mind that these categories include many different facets. Of course, there's basic things such as personnel, but supplies, materials, related contracted services, and other expenses are worked into each one of these budget categories. So I would like to start with the Board of Education budget points. And this is an area you'll see in our structure that we provide in overview slide, looking at the variance, some of the key points to speak to, and then an overall glimpse of the actual budget. So this is a category that we see increasing by 4.4%, which you can see is just over $3,000. And primarily, that's growing from two different areas, some increases in our policy service that we get with New York School Boards for updating our policies, and increases in Board of Education training, where we have some dedicated board members that are regularly attending different professional growth opportunities for themselves. So you can see the, an overview of what the actual budget looks like, the variance in each and every line as related, with a total sum of 4.4%. But again, that 4.4% is $3,000. Chief School Administrator, which is another budget category, and you can see a small nominal increase of 0.52%, of about $1,800. Some of those adjustments you can see are coming in through other expense, which is getting into professional memberships and other professional obligations, as well as contractual salary increase. Finance budget points. So what we're looking at here is our finance operation, Division of the Business Office. And here, we're looking at increases of 1.62%. We're seeing a sal, some salary increase and increases in our B O C's costs. And we should be mindful that there's some B O C's costs that we don't necessarily have control of, that are administrative in nature and that are passed on to all the districts within the region. I do want to highlight where we see a salary increase, increase here for the board in clerical services. The result here is due to the replacement of one particular employee, that when someone was replaced, that the, the salary was at a higher level than the prior employee that was here. So now, when we get into staffing of the business operation, we're seeing a larger increase here. And you can see there's some initiative tied to this, an initiative that can be up for discussion and has been part of dialogue with the Communications Committee along the way. But we're looking at an 8.99% increase. Just over 5% of that is budget-to-budget increases, but you can see about 3.5% is a result of new initiative and conversation that we've been having, looking at enhancing our digital communications. One through some contracted webmaster service to consistently keep up with our website, where now it's done really on a committee basis across the district. And also included in that $13,500 would be the fees associated with launching a new website. So again, an overview of what these variances and changes do look like. So operations and maintenance budget points here, 5.66% increase, just over $200,000 variance. So obviously, that's a large number. But when we look at operations and maintenance here, they're not necessarily push-ahead in nature. From year to year, we have a variety of needs that surface, some that come from school-based, building-based requests, where program leaders or the principals are requesting certain types of work, equipment be added for their schools, and others are identified as areas of need, such as maintenance in our schools, just to keep them going. So we'll, as we walk through this, we'll see the overall changes, and then we'll certainly get into some of the details. So one thing within the maintenance budget for grounds, we have a number of trucks, and one of them is at the end of its useful life at this point in time. So right now, in the budget, we have included the purchase of a new pickup truck that would be able to serve all our needs across the district. In our custodial budget, you can see something that's broken down, school by school. So we're looking at Dow's Lane, Main Street needs, needs at the campus, and then needs district-wide. So when you take a look at this, consider equipment and items that are really coming to the end of their life, tools that our guys need to be able to do work. And then when we think district-wide, when we look at the tools that are listed there, if we recall back to the last budget, we added a new maintenance worker, and he's outstanding and doing a great job and saving us thousands and thousands of dollars. But we need him to be able to do more, and with that, we need to be able to support his work with some new tools and equipment.
What's a walk-behind burnisher?
It's like, polish the floors.
Polish the floors? Okay.
Like the disc.
Got it.
So, then we have lists of building repairs, and these have grown out of combinations of requests that have been generated for the schools and other needs that have surfaced that, as identified by Gary Knowles. So I'll give you a second to take a look. But as you'll see in each school, there's going to be some general repairs and maintenance, and then some routine things such as carpet and painting that will, that you'll see surface. And then capital building repairs. So these are larger-scale items that have been identified by Mr. Knowles as needs. So some items are really operational in nature, electrical upgrades, looking at areas where we have to add additional circuits to support needs in, in the building, looking at sanding and restriping the mar gym floor, something that we've pushed off for a couple of years now. But you get to a point where you have to sand it completely down to be able to make sure we're, we have a safe surface with good grip for our student athletes. Concrete work in a number of places across the district, and some asphalt work, as you can see. Looking at installing some irrigate, irrigation at Lower Dow's Field to be able to support healthy sod growth down there, so we don't have a continued dust bowl situation. Some building work from place to place, purchase and install concrete slab and storage shed for athletics equipment. That would be at Mizaro's Field, and a part of a conversation that was tied to the bond work going back years ago. And other updates, as you can see, to our facilities.
One of those things, it's not very clear which school you're talking about. I wonder if maybe if this is edited, it could be.
So.
For example, where it says four lines up from the top, near the south end of the playground, what playground are we talking about? Or above that, handicapped entrance, what, what entrance?
Number three.
So item number three, failed concrete walkway.
The building.
102 is here.
102 is up here. It's right outside.
Right outside the music room.
Maybe just if this is documented.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of them say high school, some.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a good point. So we certainly can clarify that. If there's any other questions, Gary can certainly speak to the specifics.
It's not a question for, it's just.
No, point of clarity, and it's well received.
You're going so fast that I can't go through these.
And if you'd like me to slow down, I'd be glad to.
No, probably it's better.
Thanks, John. So we look at also across the district, we have messenger and mailing services. We have a messenger that delivers mail, that couriers items from building to building throughout the day. It's an area we're actually seeing a decline in our costs, just because our mail expenses have dropped off because we rely so much more heavily on electronic communication. So you can see the decrease of about $4,000 there. So some special budget items, and this is where we get into looking at some of our insurances and the like, and we're looking at a 3.59% budget category variance. And here, we're seeing increased B O C's administrative costs again, but we're also seeing an increase in insurance, cyber insurance policy. Based upon some of our past experiences, we saw it responsible to purchase some cyber insurance that would provide the district some added levels of support in insurance should we have a, any type of breach or issue similar in the future. But you can see a cost of $13,000 there, something that is actually growing in popularity. And this was something that Beverly and I investigated a while ago for obvious reasons. And in doing so, in the newsletter from our insurance group today, the leading article, or yesterday, the leading article is a recommendation to their school districts to purchase cyber insurance. So we're already out in front of that a little bit. Transportation costs. So we're actually looking at a possible budgetary decline here. Right now, we're seeing a decrease of about 3%, which equates to about $70,000 in a decrease. And as things are going, we may have the possibility of some additional savings in this category as well. We certainly credit.
Or above that, handicapped entrance, what, what entrance?
Number three.
So item number three, failed concrete walkway.
The building.
102 is here.
102 is up here.
Yeah.
Right outside the music room.
Maybe just if this is documented.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of them say high school, some.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a good point. So we certainly can clarify that. If there's any other questions, Gary can certainly speak to the specifics.
No, it's not a question for, it's just.
No, point of clarity, and it's well received.
You're going so fast that I can't go through these.
And if you'd like me to slow down, I'd be glad to.
No, probably it's better.
Thanks, John. So we look at also across the district, we have messenger and mailing services. We have a messenger that delivers mail, that couriers items from building to building throughout the day. It's an area we're actually seeing a decline in our costs, just because our mail expenses have dropped off because we rely so much more heavily on electronic communications. So you can see the decrease of about $4,000 there. So some special budget items, and this is where we get into looking at some of our insurances and the like, and we're looking at a 3.59% budget category variance. And here, we're seeing increased BOSI's administrative costs again, but we're also seeing an increase in insurance, cyber insurance policy. Based upon some of our past experiences, we saw it responsible to purchase some cyber insurance that would provide the district some added levels of support in insurance should we have a, any type of breach or issue similar in the future. But you can see a cost of $13,000 there, something that is actually growing in popularity. And this was something that Beverly and I investigated a while ago for obvious reasons. And in doing so, in the newsletter from our insurance group today, the leading article, or yesterday, the leading article is a recommendation to their school districts to purchase cyber insurance. So we are already out in front of that a little bit. Transportation costs. So we're actually looking at a possible budgetary decline here. Right now, we're seeing a decrease of about 3%, which equates to about $70,000 in a decrease. And as things are going, we may have the possibility of some additional savings in this category as well. We certainly credit some of this to not only the work of Ms. Miller, but our transportation supervision at Arjlee, who is constantly looking to find efficiencies and save us some monies each year. So again, this is a number where we're seeing a decrease of 3%, about a $70,000 savings, and we're optimistic that we may be able to realize some additional savings here as we move forward in the process.
Could you maybe talk to the variances within the line? Because you've got private schools going up substantially and special education going down. I'm sorry, special education going up substantially, private, I'm sorry, it's hard to see here.
I think you were at the first.
Yeah, I was sorry, the first time, yeah.
This is just based on actual needs. It depends on the private schools, we pay per student, and it depends on the run. So those are actual, it may go up, it may go down. And we have found that we have not been expending as much as we anticipated in special education. Some of the runs, I think they've been able to consolidate, you know, some of the runs as well as some of the aids.
Does this mean that we have many more students in private schools than the prior?
No, I think it's pretty stagnant, but it depends on the location of the school.
And we may also remember that this year, there was added opportunity of efficiencies where the state provided local school districts with the ability to piggyback contracts. So we're combining the, maybe some other students from other districts that are jumping on those routes. And if the transportation leadership has been able to be able to merge routes, we're in a position where obviously the cost per pupil drops dramatically. So these do reflect the real, real costs. Some of the items may have shifted a little bit in, in line items, but they've done a fine job of, of really combining routes. And again, that piggybacking has been helpful because we have some other districts that have jumped on board with.
Wouldn't also apply to private schools as well? The piggybacking?
We do that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right.
We combine. It hasn't benefited the same way.
Debt service, we're seeing a decline here, and this shouldn't really be a surprise to the Board in some ways because we recognize that we do have savings from bond refinancing and some lower-than-expected related costs associated with the 2014 bond. One item that is driving some of this, though, is that when we're looking at our technology lease, so we have a cycle where we're leased, we have a lease for technology equipment, rather than leasing this year, we're going to purchase equipment infrastructure-wise, and that type of equipment is no longer eligible to be, to go through a lease. So we're actually building the cost of that directly into the budget. So there's costs associated with that, which doesn't mean that we're not looking at purchasing additional devices in that, but we're looking at devices coming from the Smart Schools money that we discussed earlier in the year. And then the intrafund transfer, not seeing a change here, and this is really a budget pass-through that we have every, every school year. And Bev, do you want to explain what this is? Because I know it's a little complicated, because the question's been asked each year in the past.
We have to pay a portion of the special ed summer school tuition and transportation at a certain percentage, and that's where we have to transfer the money into the special aid fund because the summer programs all have to be paid out of the federal aid program.
And then this is an overall budget summary. So as you can see, this is an incomplete picture. When we get to this point in the presentation and discussion, two weeks from tonight, the rest of these lines will be filled in. So you can see where we're going in our journey in completing our, our budget process. You know, we are certainly seeing some declines and variances here and there, but certainly we know this is going to change moving forward. But tonight, we had a conversation, or started a conversation about needs in the area of operations. Certainly, we're interested to hear any questions that the Board or public may have. Mr. Knowles is here to be able to speak to any of the facilities-related projects. I also want to note that the Buildings and Grounds Committee is going to be meeting in the near future to work through some of these requests that, that are there and look for, to add some priority to them. And all this comes up for discussion, again, down the road. So with that said, there's a number of other opportunities to join the conversation, and to the few folks in the audience, I hope you bring a couple of friends next time. But Mr. Whitney, the floor is now yours.
Thank you. I think we'll begin with, as we always do, with questions related to the presentation. And I think, you know, given the fact that the numbers here are relatively few, it's fair as well to make comments along the way. I think in past years, I've tried to separate questions and comments, and we'll deal away with that artifice. Just have your moment of, you know, five minutes or whatever you need to question and comment as you, as you like. Michael, we'll begin with you at the end, unless you want to take a moment to collect your questions, and I can ask some questions if you're not quite ready yet.
I'll take advantage of Gary being here. With the, I know a lot of the work that's going to be done on the fields will be paid out of the bond, but in terms of the grounds requests, there are relatively few. Have we gone back and looked at discussion and the committee report for what our needs might be, or have you looked at what our needs might be with the Mazeros Field and, you know, are there things on, on the budget side that we need to look at? Or that we're left out?
Gary, let me come to the mic.
Storage for the athletic equipment was part of last year's budget, but because we were held up by SED, we carried it over to this year. There will be some fencing that will have to be replaced around the track. That's pretty much it for the field work.
One concern I've had is just, you know, with a brand-new, expensive field, what we're doing in terms of securing it to make sure it's, you know, that nothing happens to it in terms of, so is there any?
Dr. Harrison and I, we've, we've talked about some, some sort of cameras to go out to monitor the field during the off times. The only issue that we ran into was that the field is dark. Without lighting on the field, the cameras really don't pick up, even the night infrared cameras don't really pick up that much. So the only other suggestion that one of the vendors came across was more of like a, a, I can't, I can't think of what it was called. It was more of like a motion-type detector that would go on the field. The only issue we would have with that is every time someone enters the track or the field, you know, during the evening hours, we're going to get alarm calls.
You're going to, you're going to respond to a lot of deer walking across the field.
Right, right, yeah.
I guess now.
Not at night.
Well, they're.
They're going to be disappointed.
The deer.
And similarly, I guess I'm not completely familiar, but when we have ambulances or other vehicles up there for sports, in the event that the, that someone is injured and they need to be removed from the field, what would be done in that, in that case? Would an ambulance be driving onto the field? Is there some sort of other measure?
I, they, we would probably have to use one of our, some of our equipment to move someone off the field, like the gator or the golf cart, because damage will be done to the field if we were to.
So that would be worked out as a protocol to make sure that we're not damaging the field?
Yes, yes.
Do we, this, you know, are we, did we ever talk about what, what the restrictions, this is kind of a side note, but it just occurs to me, we ever, right now, anybody who wants to can go and you, at any time, and use the track and run or walk around it. And I've been doing that the last few weeks, New Year's resolution, but are we, have we ever talked about what our restrictions are, if any? I hope none on, on using that, the new track or?
We're going to start charging a dollar a night.
I'd pay that. It's cheap, but.
We haven't developed protocols yet.
Or using that, or using the field, which, you know.
Right.
We haven't just. No, we've, we've had kids going and kicking a soccer ball around under something if nobody's using it.
Yeah, we've talked about general, initially, we talked about general usage requirements and signage. Gary, Artie and I have examples of signage that either are provided by the turf manufacturers or examples that we photographed at different fields when we've been out supporting our, our students at other, other sites. But that's really more for the, the protocols for what's permitted on the field, the types of use. But we have not revisited any usage of the facilities.
Yeah, that's something maybe the Board should consider at some point.
Michael and I were talking about the communication that would be necessary to students and community members, just even about how to use the field and not accidentally damage it. It's a part of the rollout, you know.
It could be signage or something.
Yeah, exactly, right. But developing the protocols would obviously have to happen ahead of time.
But I guess I would just say that i- if, upon reflection and discussion, there's anything we can do to make sure that we are protecting this investment, I'm certainly someone who would be supportive of hearing those ideas in this context of.
Well, one of the things we, I think we do need to discuss is field use, because all of our fields are overused. And even though we're getting a turf field, it's going to be required maintenance, especially with the organic fill. So it's not just like we're putting a field in and we're done. We're going to have to take care of it if we want to keep it, and we're going to have to monitor use. I think we do.
Well, and there's an, I notice there's irrigation in here for Lower Dow's.
Yes.
Because Lower Dow's is in bad shape.
Right.
Bad shape. Does the irrigation, maybe you can just talk that, talk us through on that point? Because if we're going to irrigate, there must be another step as well to unpacking that field.
Oh, it would be more of the aeration, the deep-tine aeration, getting the field in condition to, to actually put down seed, fertilizer, and just hopefully we get a rest time for the field. Because if we don't get a rest time, all that work is, is going to be for nothing.
Is there some thought, maybe we should have budget in here for putting new sod on Lower Dow's the way we put it on Upper Dow's?
And I would almost suggest that we not consider that until we have Mazeros totally online.
Right. But that would be next year, though, still in the budget.
But keep in mind, while Mazeros and East Fields being done, those fields are really going to be used, Upper Dow's, Lower Dow's, and Lower, Lower Dow's. That's all we're going to have.
Right.
When, when is the thought of putting this irrigation system in for that Lower Dow's?
Possibly in the summer.
I, I had thought we talked about Mazeros just being done over a single summer, so it would, we wouldn't ever have a playing season without having, being able to use Mazeros.
When football starts.
But keep in mind, we still don't have East Field.
No, I know, I know, I understand that, but we would always have Mazeros except for the summer, maybe, except for the preseason of football, maybe.
August.
Or soccer.
They start approximately August 18th is the start date for sports, so maybe on the field. So we would have potentially time for construction for installation. My concern would be that we wouldn't, if we were to use sod, that we wouldn't have time for the sod to be able to take.
All right. But I mean, for the following spring season, maybe we would want to be prepared to bring it back into.
Yeah, so we're going to actually have a Buildings and Grounds meeting coming up to discuss these things, so that could be.
So we may, the Buildings and Grounds Committee may actually make some recommendations that impact the numbers that are in front of us tonight.
Okay, great. That's all. Just another question, as a new Board member, when we talk about the, the different salary lines in the, in the different offices, I don't really have a, a sense of how many people are in each office. So I would love just to have a sheet at some point that says how many people we have working in, in each office, the business office, the, because I remember at the high school last year, that was one of the requests, was to add clerical, but I don't have a sense of what the numbers are in each.
Mean for each budget line?
Yeah, where it's mentioned, just, maybe it's just a full-time figure of, you know.
I think we actually used to have that a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I saw the older budgets that it used to be there.
Yeah, just a column for FTEs.
Yeah. Thank you. Over to you.
I, there's a lot to digest, and I haven't done it, and it's frankly hard to read this. But I had one, just one thing caught my eye. These are all small numbers, and they're not really very important for overall budget plan. Why are the equipment, there's a, this drop in equipment spending under Chief School Administrator and Business Administration? What's happening on there?
Yeah, so when we, when we moved from, from the modular building into Dow's Lane, we had to purchase some new, new furniture, and, and so that falls into equipment. So that expenditure drops off, and the couple thousand dollars that remains, that's a standard, you know, a couple thousand dollars for equipment for technology and that, that may need to be replaced.
And the, the fact that Ms. Miller is retiring, is that reflected in our?
It is.
Yep, under 1310150.
Which page?
It's under the business office.
Which page?
Don't be so happy when you talk about it.
Just say.
It's under, it's under slide 12.
Page, page six.
Yeah, right, right. And that's the administrative salaries going down.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's only, that's part of my salary. The other part is reflected under transportation.
Oh, okay. So there's also.
Define under, right.
I was going to say, I thought, didn't want to say, but had been a misimpression, you're making more, but you were, okay. Fine, thanks, that's all I have.
If you have more questions, we can come back around.
Well, no, I, I mean, I kind of feel like we need to see the whole budget, and then we'll, we'll start seeing where we can.
Okay.
I mean, like, you know, there's all this, the, the maintenance and, and building stuff that we could conceivably defer some of it, but we don't want to, and, but, that just, it depends on the whole package, I think.
Catherine?
Between B and G and.
I had a couple of questions, beginning with the Board of Education budget, thinking about it on a sort of more of an Uber level. Yeah, Gary, you can sit down.
Thank you.
You don't have to stand for that. The, our budget, proposed budget is 72,000, I think it looks like, 200. And then when I looked in our, you know, audit report from last year, June 30th, 2015, which I know really is effectively two years in the past, right? Because the proposed budget, 16, 17, and then we have our push-ahead budget, pardon me, our approved budget for 15, 16. So the actual number that I'm about to quote is from 14, 15. But for the Board of Education, that number was $58,000 actual in 14, 15. So really, we're talking about an increase over two years of going from 58 to 72. And I guess I'm just, you know, it'd be, it'd be interesting to say, well, what would be the impact if we brought it back down to $58,000? What would that mean? Because we're really talking about a hardship year.
Some of that increase was the district meeting increase, I think, two years ago, between now and two years ago, because we're going to go to the new voting machines.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
And it's much more expensive there.
You know, so that's not just Board of Education, it's the district meeting.
I see. And two years ago, we had two votes rather than one within the year between a bond and that, right?
Right. But then maybe that means we have savings next year because we're only going to have one vote.
The new voting machines are much more expensive to lease.
And we have to, we have to get those new voting machines?
Yeah, we don't have an option.
Oh, yeah, no, it's a requirement.
So that would fall under?
Other expense, I think.
Okay.
But we can look at.
Yeah, I mean, the question is, how do we take some money out of there without necessarily?
Also, too, is two years ago, you did not have the E policy, the rich policy?
We added the policy service as well.
Yeah, that's, that was the big change.
Right. Are we still going to be requiring that next year?
It's an annual update, where we get updates to our policies and ongoing.
Okay.
And is that increasing? How much is it? How much increase are we talking about that?
Under district, it's about $1,000. The other expense code, wasn't that Elaine?
I'm sorry?
About the E policy.
Do you remember what the increase was? E policy service?
The, the review, it's going, combined, they're all going up about $1,000.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, and we're paying for the policy review over what, two or three years?
Yeah, that's broken out over time. But we'll, we'll detail the difference.
Okay. I mean, again, I'm just thinking, how do we get a little bit of savings here and there? Skipping to, nothing in finance. So in, in the, I'll skip over staff, back to operations and maintenance. Gary, sorry, this is, thank you. So obviously, we're talking about $200,000 increase next year versus this year. And I think it's hard to know, but it looks like this year was about flat with the actual from 14, 15. So I guess my question is, you know, given the tough environment that we're operating in with a 0% tax levy cap, if we were to just say we only can spend what we spent last year, how would that, would that literally, would you just go through your list and start crossing things off? I've already done that with, with Bev. We ranked one being most important.
We ranked one being most important, two with three being least important. I don't know if you have that.
No, I don't have it with me.
But there are quite a few items on...
I think it would be interesting to look at that, and I guess, you know, again, the B and G committee is going to... So we'll do that, and then we'll report back to the board. So I guess, in effect, we'll just postpone that discussion for another...
Okay.
Meeting. But that's the direction I'm heading in, you know. You know, I agree with John, we don't want to postpone repairs and maintenance, because then that just ends up costing us more in the future. But we do have to look closely at this to make sure that all of these expenses are required this year. I think that is it, because transportation, if you can just look into... I'd love to know a little bit more about, because those number, those shifts are just so significant between the private schools and the special education. You know, if they were small percentages, I would not care very much.
I think these are more accurate. I think last year, the special ed was still, you know, overinflated, but the private was under.
I see.
So I think this is more of an accurate reflection.
Are these numbers we typically get from Joe, or?
Yeah.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've forgotten how we're charged for, how do they figure out how much, how much we pay for private school, the out-of-district transportation? Is it per student?
It's per student, yes.
No, it's cost of the bus, and then it's...
Allocated over the...
Yeah, so it's pro-rated per child on the bus. So you could theoretically have one child that's on a bus, where you're paying the entire, say, fifty thousand dollars for the bus run, or sixty thousand dollars for a bus run. But if then you have ten children on that bus, you know, it's adjusted per child.
Right.
And that could be for any of the students in the quad and potentially other districts that were passing on the way.
Which does beg the question, when are we getting the bus study on ridership and actual...
It arrived this week, but we have not had a chance to review it yet.
Okay. Because I know that included the private schools as well.
Correct, yep, no, we got it, actually, yesterday, yeah, yesterday.
I mean, I guess if it was potentially incorrect in the past, and now we think it's more correct, I guess the real question is, how do we know it's more correct? And what's the backup detail that we get from Joe? Just because, you know, going from five forty-two, five hundred and forty-two thousand private school to seven fifty, that is a significant increase.
I had another question. So I see, among other items, replacing the carpet here with tile, and the number of other rooms with tile, added up to about sixty thousand. Why is replacing carpet with carpet tile?
Carpet tiles, if a section of tile is damaged, we can just take that section out and replace it. Whereas this is a, maybe, it's a seam carpet, it's rolled. If it's damaged over here, the whole roll has to come up, and we're never going to match it. So everywhere that we've replaced carpet, we've gone with carpet tiles now.
And so all those areas have damaged carpet that, or it's just...
Worn, damaged carpet, yeah, yeah. Like in the district office, we actually kept, in the business office, I mean, the superintendent's office area, we kept the existing carpet and just added to it, and we're replacing areas that are damaged. All right.
Any more follow-ups? No? Okay. So I think we can move on. Thank you, thanks, Gary.
Thanks.
We can move on to our budget.
Yeah.
I keep saying budget fund, our fund balance discussion, and the...
Did you want to take any comments from the community before, if there is?
Oh, well, sure. Anybody want to comment on what we just heard now? No? Okay, thank you. But you can also comment again after we go through the fund balance detail, because that's going to be very interesting, especially if you like lots of numbers.
Is there any paper on that? Because I didn't bring my...
It's coming. Are these available in the back, or?
They are not.
Okay.
We have them to display, though.
Oh, okay, that's good.
I think you start here.
Okay.
Which schedule are you going to start with, Bev? Do you mind?
Third page in your packet, that's analysis of fund balance.
And I just want to remind everybody that...
The other one, Elaine?
This came out of a request made by John in our last meeting, which I completely endorsed, because it's something I've wanted to see myself, which is how we have spent money, and there is usually a surplus in most years, how that surplus has contributed to fund balance and tax cert reserves, and then how we have depleted the tax cert reserve each year. John said five years, and I thought that made sense. So we have...
I did four.
Four, okay. It's a lot of, it's, it definitely tells an interesting story. So while you guys are setting up, that's kind of the preamble.
Really, this is, Bev is going to walk through. We have an overview analysis that speaks to, this is four years of history here. Bev will talk to what the numbers mean. And then from there, we can actually go to a more detailed schedule that will show what these numbers mean. So Bev, if you want to kind of walk through and tell me as you need to scroll.
Okay. I'm going to just give a brief explanation of how you arrive at fund balance, because it's very complex.
And if I, if I could say, just makes you speaking to, we also generated a kind of a Q and A document, which is of each board member's place, and there was in the back, we're going to post it on the website as well, just a general overview explaining what the different fund balance is and what their different reserve accounts are.
The easiest way is if you had just a plain budget with no tax certs, you would just close your revenue and expenses and encumbrances to fund balance. However, we have the tax cert reserve, and by regulation, you cannot pay directly from a tax cert reserve. You have to pay from the general fund and then move it in and out of fund balance. So that's why you'll see all of these figures here. So for the eleven-twelve year, we started July one with a fund balance of two million, and I'm just going to round it here.
And it's at the, and that's four percent?
Right. And the...
Four percent, sorry, just four percent of...
Four percent of your budget. You're allowed by state to bring over four percent of your voter-approved budget. So for example, this year, our budget...
Not revenue budget, not tax revenue budget.
No, it's the total budget. So this year, our budget's fifty-seven million, six sixty-four, so it would be four percent of that.
And it would be, and the four percent for, that you start July first, twenty-eleven with?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Is that your bat call?
Sorry.
That's all right.
I have to check, because if it's my daughter, I have a problem.
I understand.
So I just want to understand just the one technicality. That would be the previous year's budget?
No, it's...
Seven one twelve.
No, it's the future budget, so...
Do you want to, do you want to answer that?
I'm sorry, I think this...
Yeah, we can take a little recess, since we need Bev for this discussion. We'll take a five-minute recess. Thanks for being patient.
We can talk away from the mic.
There's two of us.
Terribly sorry about that.
Uh, we're taking a five-minute recess.
These are all done, by the way.
Everything okay?
Yeah.
There's actually one more. She's on the road. I turned off, she calls back again. But I get nervous, because, you know, if I get a call, it's my daughter, there's a problem.
Right, absolutely.
Her medical. That's why I can never turn my phone.
Condo development.
This is going to be...
These are property taxes.
I'm hoping you can do it by nine o'clock.
They file returns, they just get, they get a bill.
I was here a little bit. They have notes.
No.
Yeah, it would be taxed if they, if they're a for-profit business. I don't know how much. Access to business, all the businesses, all of the...
All of our commercial...
It's a reduction in there.
My daughters keep including in a text, all these recipes, like...
Everything, she has it on her cuisine on...
Oh, it's an apple peeler and quail.
Yeah, 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 see?
Like zucchini spaghetti?
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 I have a handheld one.
Really?
Oh, it's great. It turns zucchini into spaghetti. They're called zoodles.
Really?
Yeah, zucchini noodles.
Is everything okay?
Zoodles, yeah. Yeah, look at that.
Oh, my goodness.
I know, there's something special.
That's an attachment to a...
Yeah, to her, yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
I always wonder what they look like. I saw, my wife has one of the KitchenAid or whatever, and you throw it on the front.
Wow.
Well, it's cool.
I do it by hand in two seconds. It wouldn't even be worth making that thing dirty.
Of course you do.
Come on, it's like a tool.
It's a toy, you know, the culinary, blush it, skip a generation, my children got it.
All right, Mr. Hannity. Yeah, we can continue.
This is the paper.
Mr. Hannah?
Yeah, well. Assisted living, that's the future.
We're flexible.
All of us.
I'm trying to place my mother one better.
Okay, we'll start this all over again. Minnesota? So for the two thousand eleven twelve year, you'll notice that the revenue and expense was a deficit. But then you have to add back the tax cert reserve. So actually, you had a one million, seventy-nine thousand dollar surplus to put back into fund balance.
Correct.
Okay? Then you have to add back the previous year's encumbrances, because that money is always saved to pay for those expenses. And that year, you put one million, forty-two thousand into tax cert reserve, a fund balance, and we put a hundred and thirty-seven thousand additional in appropriated fund balance. So that brought your end-of-the-year fund balance down to the four percent. Okay? The same scenario for the next year.
Can I, can I just stop and ask a question on this?
Sure, absolutely.
The, the amount that's, the third line of numbers, transferred from tax cert reserves?
Yep, that's expenses.
That basically is just determined by the amount of tax certs that have to be settlements that are paid in that year?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that, that, those numbers will be exactly matched by payments on tax certs?
They exactly match this other sheet that I gave you detail.
And, but by the way, are we making that one public, or is that not?
Yes, it's up there. It's up there. Because that's, that's foilable, because the board's already approved all of these payments.
It's all stuff we've agreed to.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so that, those numbers come out of tax cert reserves, but only to the extent that we have tax certs to pay.
Correct.